Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's town hall meeting presented by Conifer Area Council. Is everybody ready for the snow?
Yeah.
Alright. You know, I don't get all that excited about snow in April, but boy, I'm sure glad we're getting the moisture, so it's a good thing. Lots of seats still up here. Well, I want to thank you all for being here. We really appreciate you coming. We've got a lot of information. It's gonna be packed full tonight. And I'd like to give a special thanks to Dana Rowe and Firewood to Logging, and to Matt Armbruster and Matt's Tree Service for their community support of tonight's town hall meeting. Their information is bottom of the agenda, so please give them a call if you need any help with mitigation or any of that. We also have somebody else here that's going to be giving a presentation, so a lot of information here tonight for you. Just so you know, we will have speakers between 7:00 and 8:00. We have asked all of our speakers, as we always do, to present just the facts. They are not to support or oppose any development issue, political agenda, individual person, or business. Now, there will be no questions during the presentations. We have a number of people that are going to present tonight, but those will be done about 8:00 o'clock, and at that point, we'll have an open house segment, and that'll be time when you can ask as many questions as you like. So if you could just hold your questions and comments, that would be great. So what's going on around here? First of all, I'm gonna ask Melanie Swerjen, who is the Director of the Conifer Area Chamber, and she's gonna give you a little bit of an update. Melanie?
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. A couple of things I wanted to let everybody know that was going on. The Chamber is kicking off our event season coming up in July, July 25th with elevation celebration. And I do have vendor applications, so if you're interested in showcasing your art or any products that you have, stop by and pick up an application, you can turn that in. A few things around town. We have a couple new owners. We have, the UPS store is under new ownership. Jack Schufrieder just purchased it back in January, so he is new, so stop by and see Jack. And then also, the meadows at Marshdale is under new ownership, Steve and Lisa Steckley. And the Chamber is also having a mixer there tomorrow night, so if you are willing to jump out in the snow, join us for the mixer. And I also talked with Safeway's new owner or manager there, Janet Rothwetter, excuse me. She is excited about the things that are going on in Safeway, and she said that they are hiring about 20 people, so if you are interested or know anybody in the area that is interested in looking for employment, have them stop by and talk to Janet. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. We're gonna have quite a few different people coming up and going back again pretty fast tonight. So the next person is Peter Barkman. He is Advisor to the Conifer Area Council Board, and he's gonna talk a little bit about some of the things going on with development this time. Peter?
Thank you, Shirley. Not a whole lot in terms of new applications for commercial or residential developments, but I did want to alert, if you get the High Timber Times, we've had some news recently on some of the stall developments. One is the Conifer Town Center, there was an application for site development for a 15,000 square foot specialty retail building. The county indicated that it would not approve any new building permits until the owner of the property resolved some of the issues with the retaining wall and the main street there. And the article in the High Timber Times indicated that they're in the process of negotiating a deal, there's a bond involved where now the county may go ahead and issue the building permits once they resolve the issues on how that gets taken care of. The other one's the Kings Valley Marketplace. This is that new building over there behind the Come and Go at the base of Kings Valley Road. That's been tied up in bankruptcy and litigation, and there was an article in the High Timber Times that that has been resolved, and they're now refinancing, and they're gonna finish the building, and are seeking tenants for that. Be nice to see some of the vacant space used for new building, in my opinion. The other one that has everybody's interest here is the Iowa Gulch property or the Homestead Park, which is the property with the meadow that you see off of 285. There's a rezoning application to take that from 26 two-acre residential lots to 22 one-acre, and opening up the other part of the property for trails and a supposedly ski hill recreation. That went before the planning commission on April 8th, and the planning commission recommended denial, so the next step is for that to go before the Board of County Commissioners on May 5th, and it'll be up to the Board of County Commissioners to either go by the recommendation of the planning commission, or they have the option to approve if they want. I would encourage people to follow that if you're interested in attending that hearing. The other thing just to bring your attention to is the ongoing 285, Conifer 285 Corridor Community Plan that Heather Guthellis is working on. She's been having meetings up here on different issues. The next meeting is Tuesday, May 5th, 6:30 at Conifer Community Church, and the topic will be water. So I encourage people to go to that and see what Pat O'Connell has to say about water. That's all I have on the updates, so make time. Angela's the last minute.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, so next we have Brian Mosby. Brian is Supervisor over at the Conifer Library, and he's gonna give a little bit of information about what's going on this summer. Brian?
Thank you. Okay. Just to let you know, I do have a bunch of flyers over at the table of events, programs, things like that going on at the library. The typical ones, the book club, the Lego club, popular events there. But there are a couple of really important things going on right now. Thanks to the Lieutenant Governor's Office, this is about the third or fourth year we've done it, we have one book for Colorado going on, so if you know, just a youngster around the age of four, they don't necessarily have to be exactly four, they get a free book. Just have them come into the Public Library, this is this year's book, it's How Do Dinosaurs Get Well Soon? Pretty cute series of books. I'm sure everyone loves a free book, so come by and grab one. The other thing is, we are gearing up now for summer reading. So summer reading officially starts May 29th, and this year's focus is to unite the community in a habit of reading. So we're really pushing people to share why they read, log on their hours, sign up for the summer reading, log their hours, win prizes, and it's not just for kids, so we have teens and adults also participating. And really come together, encourage everyone to read, and it's Read 1 Million in 1 Minute, so hopefully we hit our goal that year, this year. To start that off, we have a big red carpet event at the Taj Mahal County Building on May 29th, so we're looking at local officials, mayor, celebrity authors, reading, being told that there's some Hogwarts faculty coming, and Star Wars characters there, and we're hoping to get maybe some sports celebrities to come out and encourage reading. And then our kickoff at the Public Library will be on Saturday, the 30th, so we're planning right now for crafts and events and things like that. And then, to close out the summer, on August 23rd, at the Jeffco Fairgrounds, they're gonna have a big kind of end of summer celebration for summer reading. We're being told music, games, bouncy castles, performing pigs, that's always a popular one, in a big car convoy atmosphere. So let's see, that's pretty much what I have right now, but come on by and see us up there, we'll tell you all about it.
Thank you, Brian. Do you have an actual calendar of some of those things over here, or some information?
I can give you attention to you.
Okay, okay, we're working on the information. Okay. Okay, and next, Mountain Area Land Trust and Kurt Valentine is gonna come up and talk just a little bit about some legislation that has not happened yet, but it's in the works. So Kurt?
Well, I thought I'd come and let you know, because this meeting, the next one, isn't until next fall, so this meeting's a timely meeting to let you know what's going on. There's a new bill being introduced by our representative, and it's co-sponsored by Representative John Keith, you can see him right there in the atrium area, to change the conservation easement tax credit benefits. This bill has been through two committees, it's been approved unanimously, nine to zero votes on both of those committees, so we expect it to be passed before the legislative adjournment. What it will do is will reduce the cost for landowners and increase the benefits. The current maximum that a landlord can get for donating a conservation easement is $375,000. The new legislation will allow the property owner to receive up to a million and a half in tax credits. These tax credits can then be sold to a tax credit broker for cash. What it's really gonna do is benefit, it will still benefit the small acreage landowners, but it will really benefit the larger parcels that have the higher property values to it. So we're hoping to get some of the larger landowners convinced that they can preserve their property and still use it the way they want to, and have open space and wildlife habitat on these larger parcels that may be adjoining Forest Service or adjoining Jefferson County Open Space, those type of properties, so that they, we have much larger areas that we all enjoy and love. That's the update, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kurt. And next, I would like to introduce the new Commissioner, County Commissioner, Lydie Zabel. Welcome.
Well, good evening. I just want to say thank you all for having me, and like that young man just said, property rights are important, and we have to make sure to uphold that part of our constitution. I just want, I'm here to tell you, we're gonna talk in a minute about the slash program, because I know that's what you're most interested in, but I just want to give you a little background on who I am and how I got here. I was born and raised in Colorado, which is rare when you talk to people. I grew up in Jefferson County. I went to Maple Grove Elementary School, Manning Junior High, and Wheat Ridge High School, and it was a great place to grow up. It still is a great place to grow up. I'm married to my husband Dennis. We have four children, and they've all grown up here and attended Jefferson County schools, and I guess right now my biggest claim to fame is seven months ago I became a grandma, and so they're raising her in Jefferson County too, so that's exciting. Our family owns a small business, and they have for over 40 years, and our third generation is now working there and looking to take over the business when the brothers are ready to retire. So we've been able to see from all aspects how business is a huge part of our communities. And also, the last four years, I served in the state legislature. I represented House District 27, which is part of our VADA. So I got to serve with your beloved John Kaiser, oh, for about three weeks, and then on January 30th, I was appointed to the Board of County Commissioners. And I'm thrilled to get to know your community, and who you all are, and what you care about, because that's really where government should be. Will we always agree? Probably not. I always say when people think I should always agree with them, are you married? Because sometimes if my husband and I are 50/50, we're doing good. So, but, I always have an open door, and I always want to hear what you care about and where you are in different issues. There's a lot of issues that go on in there. I come from the Serb suburbs. I can't possibly know unless you tell me. So anytime you want to talk, my office is at the Jefferson County, I don't even know what they call it, some long name, I like to call it the Taj Mahal. But please, come look me up, come find me, let's sit down and figure out what's best for your community. Slash. The lady's holding up the sign, one minute, and that's about where we are. I have Mark Danner here with me, and he can give you probably some of the nitty gritty on it, but over here at the table, I brought some flyers of the different slash locations that we have currently, the website where you can find more information on. So I'm gonna turn it over to our slash expert, Mark.
Thank you, Commissioner Zabel. So it sounds like I have 30 seconds. As you all probably have heard or are going to be reading as you're sitting in your seat tonight, Jefferson County Commissioners, Commissioner Zabel, Commissioner Rosier, and Commissioner Ty are expanding the slash program in Jefferson County multi-fold. Past 20 years, the Sheriff's Office has managed anywhere from three to sometimes up to eight or nine slash sites a year, and they've been extremely successful. The County Commissioners have listened, and they've heard that we need more slash collection sites in the county, so we're working on setting up 28 slash collection sites this year, all the way south from the North Fork Fire, all the way north to Coal Creek Canyon, and everywhere in between, there's gonna be temporary slash collection sites, so take advantage of that. We want you to clean up the properties, to mitigate the forest, and all the details are either on the slash flyer over here, or I see that's on the back of your agenda also. I'm gonna be around later after the meeting to answer any and all the questions that you have. And I still have one minute. Great. So some of the details with the slash, we have announced nine sites so far. We are just days from announcing another 12 to 15 of those sites, so soon we're gonna have all 28 sites announced, so you'll be able to see exactly where they're at, the dates that they're gonna be, and how it's gonna work. The county has purchased new equipment to help process the slash this year, horizontal grinder and trucks to haul to compost yards, so it's all going to compost yards and out to landfill. We've also put out an RFP last year, real quickly, we hired a consultant who's doing 80% of the field work for the county. I'm just overseeing the contract, but I'm sure you all know or have heard of Brett Roller. Brett, you wanna stand up? With Roller and our ranch. And Brett is, like I said, doing a lot of the field work for me, and he's the one who's really getting all these sites set up, so we're looking forward to a great slash here. And again, any questions, just grab me after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome both of you to Conifer. Okay. There have been some experts predicting a bad wildfire season. Chief of the Elk Creek Fire Department is going to talk about that just a little bit. Are we ready, in case that happens? I know I'm not. There's a lot of mitigation to do, and a lot of things that can be done, and you're gonna learn a little bit about that right now. Go.
Thank you. This is the time of year, everybody wants to know how the fire season's gonna go, me especially. So just a couple of slides here to take a look at. The first one here is a map of the current snowpack as of today in the western United States. One thing you'll notice there, that the entire western United States is below normal on the snowpack. It's varying anywhere from a low of zero in many areas. The average in the northwest is only about 12% of normal. We're pretty fortunate in Colorado, you can see the south pack up here, which is our main drainage area, is yellow instead of red. That's good, it means we're all the way up at 80% of normal. So we're below normal on our snowpack, and definitely better off than many parts of the west. Obviously, that's not the only thing that we're gonna be looking at in terms of what we're expecting for the fire season. Right now, this is the expectation for the overall weather during the summer, and right now, they're again predicting that the west coast will be warm and dry, which is very unfortunate for them, following several years of drought already. And right now, it's looking like we're gonna see moisture in the summertime, which is good. That's the good news of the whole picture. The thing about that, though, is that that's still several months away. You know, we were expecting normal or a little bit better for March, and it didn't happen. So right now, you know, we're hoping that this storm comes in, because we're at a very elevated fire danger now. Most of you probably heard, we had a, there was a 250 acre fire out by Kenosha Pass a couple of days ago. Obviously, we're in those conditions right now where we can have fires. If we get this moisture coming in, you know, obviously we'll be in better shape, but really, these forecasts are, you know, not guaranteed in any respect. So the current fire danger across the country is primarily focused on the upper plains and Midwest, and they're having a lot of fires already. It's been very busy up in the Dakotas, obviously out on the plains, and quite a bit on the grasslands in Colorado. As we move later into the summer, they're predicting higher-than-normal fire danger again for the entire west coast, and right now, basically what they're telling us for our area is it's up in the air. We won't know until it gets closer. So that's kind of where we're sitting at that, so my answer is, you know, mitigate. The thing about being prepared for wildfire is that, you know, it's a long-term process, so even in years like last year where we had relatively fewer fires, you know, those are years that we also need to be working on our preparation. One of the big things that the fire district is gonna be doing is, we are working on something called the Fire Adapted Communities Coalition, and that is a process where we're bringing people from the community together to help with our long-term wildfire planning, and we're in the recruiting phase of that right now. What we would like is people, interested people from the community who want to sit on this coalition and help kind of guide the fire prevention efforts in the Conifer area as we move into the future. And that's kind of our big goal right now, is to try to get good representation from around the community to help on this coalition, which will look at mitigation, but it'll also look at the capabilities of the fire response, and as well as being prepared for evacuations, having good access to neighborhoods, and all of the other pieces that go into being prepared for wildfires. So if anybody is interested, now would be the time to come forward and help us with that project. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Brad Huddleston with Splintered Forest Tree Services, and he's gonna do a little presentation on mitigation. And while he's getting that all ready here, there are information anyway from three different companies back in the back, so if you need a little help on your property, have some questions, there's definitely some people back there to talk to and ask questions. I'm bringing the open house. Okay, Brad?
Okay, so my name's Brad, like you mentioned, I'm with Splintered Forest, and I was asked here to educate you all on a little bit about fire mitigation real briefly. I'm an ISA certified arborist, so a couple of things I wanted to cover was how to create a defensible space around your home, some general mitigation terms, protection zones, why mitigate, price factors, and how to make sure you're hiring a reputable contractor. So we'll start off with what is fire mitigation? And put simply, it's just the reduction of fuels around your home or structure to create a defensible space. This is usually divided into three zones. I'm sure many of you know about Zones 1, 2, and 3, but we'll go into a little bit more about that here in just a bit. There's three main considerations in each of these zones. One is the removal of ladder fuels, ground vegetation, slash. You want to do this through selective thinning of the dead, the diseased, the dying trees, and also creating adequate crown spacing. In Zone 1, we're creating this defensible space, this is 30 feet from your home. You also want to create this Zone 1 along your ingress and egress paths. It needs the most fuel reduction, so really there shouldn't be much burnable or combustible fuel left in these areas. A few specimen trees is okay, but you really want to make sure you're getting the pine needles raked away, any low-lying bushes, any dead or diseased trees, you really want to remove all of those. Another big thing that insurance companies are especially concerned about is removing the overhanging branches from your homes, especially if they're near any chimneys. In Zone 2, we're looking at thinning out all the dead and diseased trees, overcrowded trees. Again, we're focusing on ladder fuels up to a height of 10 feet, providing that crown spacing of 10 feet, and you want to do this from 30 feet out to 100 feet of your home. If any of you've gotten those insurance letters, I'm sure some of you have, this is really what they're focused on, is Zones 1 and 2 from your home, they want to see that you're making the efforts to protect your home. Zone 3, this goes 100 feet to the edge of your property. Many of your properties don't extend to 100 feet, that's okay, but that's when you want to start working with your neighbors. You want to improve the overall health and diversity of your forest, and really you're just trying to maintain it. Thin out those dead trees, remove those slash piles, and this is a good area to stage firewood, especially if it's on the uphill side of your home. I know nobody wants to trudge 100 feet away from their home, but if you have a mitigation contractor, or you're doing mitigation yourself, you really want to make sure that you're not doing that and then putting a combustible fuel source right next to your home. Why mitigate? A few really good reasons. One is to provide a staging area for firefighters in the event of a wildfire. We, our goal is to remove those fuels so that they feel safe when they're approaching your home, and that they think that they're gonna be able to conduct some structural triage. You want to diminish the intensity of an approaching wildfire. When a fire comes through, they can, if it gets up into the crowns, it will destroy your trees, it will destroy the land, but if you can keep that fire on the ground, it's much easier to fight, and it will spread around your home, and you'll get regeneration coming in much quicker after a fire. It increases your natural survivability of the structure, so in the case that firefighters aren't able to get there, it gives your home a better chance if nobody's there to save it. You want to provide clear ingress/egress for firefighters when they show up. They only have a few seconds, maybe a couple minutes, to decide whether they're gonna be able to save your home. It's gonna be pretty critical that you've got a nice inviting path for them to go in and do any triage that they need to do. And the last reason is obviously insurance compliance. This is something that they're really focusing on, they're sending out letters, they want to, they really want to see that you're doing everything you can to protect your investment and theirs. Price factors. Everybody's always curious how much this is going to cost. There's no one clear-cut answer how much to remove one single tree, or how much to mitigate one single property, but there's a few factors to consider. The size, the number of trees, any drop zones that are available for a tree, so if you have a tree growing through your deck or directly over your house, this is going to raise the cost. The accessibility and the difficulty of your terrain. If it is tough for a contractor or yourself to walk around your property, it's gonna be that much harder for them to get material out. And then the total area needing mitigation. And then, the total area needing mitigation. If you need beyond 100 feet of your home and it's densely forested, you can expect to have a higher cost, but there are ways to save. There are ways to do some of the work yourself, and that's, it's a great way to budget. If you want to broadcast the chips on the site, whether you chip yourself or whether you have your contractor do it, that's a great way. There's not a lot of good ways to dispose of your wood waste up here. One of our dumps just got shut down EDS, so there's not a lot of places for it to go. Diesel's expensive, it's tough, but we do have a lot of these slash days coming up with the county, so that's a great resource as well. If you're going to hire a contractor, have them come in, do a lot of the hard technical work, and then you can haul away the slash to one of the multitude of dates that are being provided for you. That's a really great resource that we haven't had in the past, so I would really suggest that you all take advantage of that, and we're really fortunate to have that. Get your neighbors involved. When it comes to doing fire mitigation, it's, those wildfires do not know your property boundaries. It is really critical that you're also having your neighbors do it. Have an open discussion with them. I know we don't always know our neighbors up here, but it's really great. Having experienced a personal loss in a wildfire, I can tell you that when that fire comes through, you get to know your neighbors very, very well. And the last way is just look for coupons and local advertisements. If you're going to hire a contractor, talk to them. Ask for ways to save on your individual bill. We're all here to help, and we'd all love to talk to you. Hiring a reputable contractor is, the insurance companies are focusing more and more on the trees directly next to your home. It is critical that you have somebody that has a certificate of insurance. Ask to see this. What that covers is if somebody gets hurt on your property or if they drop a tree into the house, they're covered. So, without that, you could be on the hook. Check their credentials. Check to see if they're ISA-certified. Check to see if they're a member of TCIA. Just ask for some of those things. You can save yourself a lot of headache later. See how long they've been in business. A lot of us up here, the gentleman back, Matt, and Dana Rowe, who's not here tonight, we've all been in business for a while. It's good hiring local people that have been doing this for many, many years. And then, Google, Yelp, Facebook, those are real easy ways to check to make sure that they don't have any outstanding complaints or that they're performing the work that they're prescribed to do. So, I recommend you use all those online resources, and again, just have an honest discussion with them. Have them out, get a quote, and again, harping on the insurance, make sure that they're insured. It really is pretty critical. So, that's, I think that's about all the time that I'm going to have today. Hopefully, that helps. I'll be in the back, along with my assistants from Splintered Forest and Matt with Matt's Tree Service and Dana Rowe with Firewood DeLagno. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great, great information. Okay, now, we've got some other groups up here that are just amazing, so we wanted just to give you a little update on some information. First, we've got Lauren Drabbe with Intermountain Human Society. Lauren?
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. Want to talk to you a little bit about Intermountain Human Society. First of all, how many people here live in Park County? Wow, okay, actually, I thought the number was going to be lower. So, Intermountain is in Park County. It is the only animal shelter in all of Park County, and we know Park County is huge but sparsely populated. So, we are Intermountain because we do more than just Park County. JFCO residents actually get the same rates that the Park County residents would get for the services at Intermountain. As every other organization up here will tell you, we are always looking for volunteers. So, we're no different. Let me tell you a little bit about volunteering at Intermountain. First of all, there's a display back there, and the whole middle section is about different ways you can volunteer. If you are like me, it's not good to volunteer in the shelter because you'll go home with animals. So, one of the ways I got involved, I joined the board so that I could do more of the administrative thing, give direction and guidance and community awareness type thing, but not encounter the animals on a daily basis, so I don't bring them home every day. So, that may be one thing that you may be interested in. We have volunteers that do foster, we have volunteers who do fundraising. Pretty much, if you have an interest, a talent, a skill, a desire, we'll be happy to have you and find something for you to do. Upcoming in May is our annual membership meeting. I have here some membership information. There's different levels for being a member. Only members can vote on people like me being in the board. You get discounts on adoption, you get discounts at the thrift store, and if you come to work with me, maybe we can find a way to do some business partner discounts as well. We are having a meeting, May 19th, at the fire station, El Creek Number 1 up at Blackfoot, and everyone in the community is welcome, and again, only members get to vote. So, if you want to become a member, the cheapest one is $35 for a year. There's more lifetime things if you're interested in that. And you may see us out and about in the community selling raffle tickets. We have lots of cool raffle prizes going on, and we're giving the prize away at that meeting on May 19th. Hope to see you there. The question was what time? 6:30, thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Okay, now, we have Carrie Daven with Conifer Club, and I think she'll probably tell you what that means, about the Conifer High School lights.
Welcome, everyone. I'm going to start off with the grants. So, as you know, we got a $280,000 GOCO grant, along with what we had gotten from the Daniels Fund, which was $50,000, and then the $100,000 we had to match. It's not going to start our Phase 1. We've signed our contract with Pinnellman Construction. So, the contract's signed, and we'll be doing some work, but the main part of work will not start until the day after graduation, because as you know, that's where graduation is held in the field. We are looking for additional funds, so we did not have enough to finish our concession stand and our ticket office. But if we can get that money raised while the contractor is still working for us, we'll be able to get that building done as well. So, if you're interested or know some folks needing to donate for next year's taxes, give us a call, send us an email. The 5K Run, part of the elevation celebration, so mark the date again, is Saturday, July 25th. We are looking for sponsors. We are looking for sponsors. I saw Punky here earlier. She's in the back. You can either talk to her, or you can come talk to me, or you can email Club. The Wild Game Feed, I'm not sure how many people were able to attend. We held that April 4th, and on that evening, we raised an additional $10,000. Big thank you to the sponsors, our donors, and everybody who attended that event. It was a huge success, and we had a lot of fun. And if you are interested in helping us out, we are looking for some additional board members or folks willing to volunteer. We have some board members that will probably be going out next year. We've got a great team, and if you're interested, you can come see me. I have some additional information over here at the table. That's all I have. Less than two minutes, that'd be pretty good.
Thanks, Carrie. Okay, and now, we have Lauren Clapp with Mountain Resource Center. I don't think anybody, even if you're there all the time, knows how many things they do for people up here. So, Lauren's going to just talk a little bit about Mountain Resource Center and what they do for us.
Thank you. In the last year, we've grown from 13 employees to 41, and with that growth, we've been able to provide over 20,000 services to our community, to over 4,000 individuals. We've also expanded our parents' education program, our parents' teachers' home visitation to Clay Creek County. We've developed and implemented substance abuse prevention and intervention program in area middle school and several different high schools within our community. We've expanded our workforce services, which now we have workshops being held on the weekends, not just during the week. And if you are a businessperson, we also have workshops that help with small businesses in the area. We've developed and implemented veteran services program, so we're helping veterans with reintegration into the community. Some of the updates, we are always in need of volunteers, so if you're interested in volunteering for Mountain Resource Center, we're having a volunteer interest party on Wednesday, April 22nd, from 4:00 to 5:30 at Mountain Resource Center. And we are also providing workshops on teens taking risks, and that will be held Tuesday, May 5th, at Conifer High School Library, from 6:30 to 7:30, and also, the World of South harm, Tuesday, April 21st, at Conifer High School Library, from 5:30 to 7:30. Our family education program is really ramping up for summer programs, and this is for children between the ages of 1 to 5. They'll be doing different programs such as Radio Fun, Let's Go Camping, Dinosaur Discovery, Mad Scientists Under the Ocean, and Pirates. And we also have a joint effort for the Mountain Area Jock Fair. We worked with Echo on this. That will be held Tuesday, May 12th, from 3:00 to 6:00 at Aspen Ridge Church, and we will also be holding a veteran rendezvous, May 16th, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 at Mountain Resource Center, and there'll be over 20 different service providers for veterans, and also line health fair. So, if you're a veteran, you're able to get your blood drawn for free. That's just a little tidbit of what we're doing and what's new, and there's everybody to show the back. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Wow, it's amazing what all they do. We have had several very bad accidents. Shaper's Crossing has been a bad spot, and I know I'm hearing on the news and everything else that we've had a lot of speeding. So, we have CDOT. We asked CDOT to come up and talk to us, and I believe that we have Josh Lately, who is the chief engineer, right? And Steve Harrelson, who now is the West Program Engineer, new title, right? And we have a couple of other people. I'm going to have them introduce themselves, but these people are from CDOT. Please welcome them here.
Thanks so much for having us here. I'm Emily Wellfong, and I work in communications. So, thank you so much for having us. We're going to go ahead and introduce ourselves, and then we're going to let Josh and Steve take you through what's going on in that intersection and what we're doing to address it.
Yeah, hi, everybody. I'm Paul Jacitis, the Region 1 Deputy Director of the Engineering Program in the eight counties that Region 1 is a part of. And I'll just, we'll be around afterwards to answer questions after this, but I'll just hand it right off to Steve Harrelson.
Yeah, I'm Steve Harrelson. I've met many of you previously.
Hi, Josh Lately, Chief Engineer. You know, one of the things we wanted to talk about a little bit is to let you know, safety is always our first priority. So, when we hear about things like this, it really hurts. It's something that we take a lot of pride in, it's something that, you know, we're always out there trying to improve safety and keep our citizens safe, because that's really our core duty. And, you know, as you drill down through the levels of CDOT, as you give people that are more attached to the corridor, like Steve, you know, when he hears incidents like that, he really takes us to heart and wants to find solutions and new solutions. So, I want to back up a little bit and talk about, you know, in 2011, we came in and we did some improvements at Shaper's Crossing. You had an at-grade, which just means an intersection right there that had a stop sign added before, which is typically not your safest condition, and you had kind of a sharp turn coming into that. In 2011, we came in and we separated that grade to try to get those incidents across traffic, to remove those incidents. And then, also, we softened that curve, so that curve's not as sharp as it used to be. Now, one of the things when you do that is you change driver perception behavior, and that's a really tough thing to design, too. So, all of the design improvements that we did in 2011, by all the codes and all the books that we designed to, made it a safer intersection. But now, you're starting to see these incidents come up again, and so that's, you know, piqued your interest certainly and piqued our concern as well. So, what we're doing now is trying to reassess that driver perception. Some of the steps we've taken right now are, you've probably seen that flashing 45 mile per hour. We want to make sure that you don't get lulled into a false sense of security and maybe speed through there. So, we really want to drive your attention to your speed through there, make sure it's appropriate. And speed's not the only issue there, we recognize that, so one of the things that we're going to do also is we're going to put some delineation along that median. And these are our steps in the short term to make sure that we improve that driver perception, improve safety through that manner. And then, I'm going to let Steve talk a little bit about our longer-term plans for some permanent safety improvements that you can count on.
Thanks, Josh. I brought a picture, which you probably can't see very well, but we'll stick around later, and you can come up and look at it closely. What we're planning to do is, right now, there's a depressed median that extends right to about here. We're going to extend that about 700 feet up the hill. It's going to be a depressed median, and it's going to be lined with concrete. So, it's, it'll be eight feet wide, and coming down the hill, the yellow line, which is the end of the lane line, will be four feet from that depressed concrete median. Then, that, the concrete median will be a different color, so it'll be gray concrete versus the grayish asphalt. And then, within that depressed median, we're going to put cable rail. There's a lot of cable rail in the corridor. It's like four cables, and there's a post, you know, every six feet. The way cable rail works, rather than traditional guard rail, either the W beam or the concrete, when a car hits it, it tends to bounce the car back. Cable rail acts like a catcher's mitt. It gives way, and the car pushes through it, and it doesn't bounce back. It's not like a rubber band, it's more like a safety net or a catcher's mitt. So, the cable rail that we're using deflects about six feet. So, what we've done is we've made sure that it is six feet from the opposite, a minimum of six feet from the opposite traffic. In this case, as you come down the hill, if you hit the cable rail, there's going to be eight feet between the southbound side and the traffic on the northbound side. And then, we also have to be concerned with the northbound traffic crossing over, although that's not the problem that's been apparent here, but it could happen. So, we've got the six feet there. So, as you're driving down, you'll have a yellow lane line, there'll be four feet of asphalt, then the concrete depressed median will start. Right at the edge of the concrete, we're going to put in rumble strips. So, if you're four feet over the yellow line, you'll hit the rumble strips, and then, if you keep going, you'll hit the cable rail two feet later. So, and the cable rail is a positive stop. It's also going to have brightly colored posts, so it'll be a visual stop, day or night. And it's also going to extend clear up into this straight section, well above the curve down here. To get that real estate, to build that median, last summer, we restriped that exit ramp so that it came up around the curve. We're going to shorten that back. It's not going to be as short as it was with the original 2011 striping, but it's going to be shorter than it is presently.
Since we've got a couple of minutes, I might just hit on a couple of other points that I think are important. You know, driver perception's a tough thing to design, too. I kind of mentioned that. These are some very, you know, static, by-the-book safety improvements that we're trying to do, but we're also bringing in a team. We've got some people from DC with FHWA that are kind of experts in driver perception and how do we design towards that, and they're going to be coming in and reviewing these final design plans here in a couple of weeks. And then, we'll be taking those and incorporate any good recommendations or adjustments that we can do to this design to incorporate that and make sure that we absolutely take safety first. And with that, I think we're planning on, that construction will probably start sometime maybe somewhere in the July timeframe. So, I'm looking to see for some questions afterwards. Thanks.
And we're going to have these guys all up in this area during the open house segment. A little bit more room if you have questions for them. We have both our senators, Senator Tim Neville here tonight, and our Representative John Kaiser. Tim, did you want to say a couple words?
Sure.
Do you want to just stay down there, or do you want to?
I can do it from here.
Okay.
Same time.
Thanks. I'm Tim Neville, Senate District 16, and it's going to be up into the mountains and out of the Capitol here this afternoon, so... But instead of telling you everything that's going, let me give you a quick update. How much time do I have? Yeah.
Two minutes.
Did you say time already? That's pretty good. You know politicians, that's what they should do. Your time's up. Let me give you just a quick, I think one of the things that everybody's interested in, we've got a lot of things. The law bill has passed the Senate, it's passed the House. There've been a lot of amendments. Everybody's looking... amendments, everybody's looking, it's like anything else. The advantage that you have in Colorado is that we don't really have these omnibus bills, but when it comes to the long bill, it can be very long, because there are a lot of amendments that are tapped onto it, and everybody's looking for their little carve-out. And most of that gets stripped off. The thing I can tell you is that, yes, all the money is spent, yes, there is a taper refund that's coming this year, we'll identify how big that is. We do want to get, we do want to get that back to the taxpayers, that's not our money, that's your money, as far as I'm concerned, and I think a lot of people agree. We'll have enough money to run government, but we're not going to be flush with a lot of money for a tremendous amount of new programs, but there are some new ones that are coming on board. When all's said and done, it's going to be an increase in the budget of about six, a little over 6.3%. So, you know, the budget's growing, whether that's good or bad, those are the arguments that we have. We have a split legislature, so we slot that out every day. Education, I think, is an area that's important to everybody here, especially in Jefferson County, how that's going to look. We hear a lot of conversation regarding the issues around testing, trust me, park, common core. And we have two good bills that we passed through the Senate, Senate Education, that are going to make their way over to the House. The House is putting some legislation out, we'll see how that goes. But I think there are two very, very good bills that we have crafted with bipartisan support. One bill, actually, that's more of a Republican bill, another bill that has definite bipartisan support, that has a good opportunity to land on the governor's desk, that offers relief from the constant chronic testing, and also has some very, very good things regarding the ability for, to create pilot programs at the local level with assessments, and give the Jefferson County School District some opportunity to plot its own course, which I think is extremely important. So we're looking forward to that. And again, I appreciate all, every, and every one of you, and definitely stay in touch. My office is your office, room 615 on the Sherman Building. Come on up and see us, and you're welcome to come out anytime. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. And now I'd like to introduce John Kasser, our representative. John?
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming, and hopefully, we've been in communication over email. I've had people who've been receiving some emails from you on the CDOT issue. I know that we've had about 600 members of our community that have sent me emails saying, hey, we need to address the issue of Shakers Crossing. So this isn't a political issue at all, thank, I see that some of the emails right there here. And, you know, I've really taken it upon myself to try to help broker and work with the CDOT folks, engaging the governor on it directly, with Governor's Chief of Staff, and with the Executive Director of CDOT. And I am, I am really pleased that CDOT's taking this very seriously. So thank you all for coming tonight to help explain to our community what we're going to be able to do to make this a safer place, because it really is a public safety issue. It's a transportation issue, obviously, but I realize also that, you know, when that road is closed, a lot of you can't get back to your homes. And on the weekends, there's a lot of traffic going through there, and I know none of us want to see what happened here just a few weeks ago happen again, and that's hopefully what we will be able to avoid. So I went into some pretty extensive detail in my emails over the last few weeks about my different discussions with the state-level officials at CDOT. And if you aren't getting any of those emails, please just feel free to see me afterwards, and I'll make sure, get you one of your business cards, and we'll certainly get you in over there. Because I think it's important, I think it's important that as a community, when we have an issue like this, that we have, you know, that your representatives that you elect, do something about it, because this is going to cost some money, it's going to cost some state funds, state funds to get this taken care of. But CDOT finished their study here this last week, and they recognize and they know that even after the interchange was, construction was completed, accidents have increased. And so they're going to, they're going to be working hard this summer now. Unfortunately, that's going to inconvenience a lot of us in the middle of summer to have about a month of construction going on. But I think that we can all agree that we need to have a fix, a permanent fix, and one that will hopefully make that much more safe for everybody. So that's a big thing that I've been working on at the state level. Obviously, you know, we're winding down a little bit in terms of calendar days in the legislative session, we've got about three weeks left. Some of you might remember that we don't go year-round here in Colorado, we have a 120-day legislative session. So we'll be finishing up in the first part of May. It's pretty hard for me to believe, it's hard for me to even say, 650 bills or more will be introduced just in a 120-day period. And that's a lot of laws in one year. My first law actually was a repeal, so I tried to take some, make the stack a little shorter. But, you know, we're working on some really good stuff. I think I missed Kirk when he was talking about the Conservation Use Bill that I'm working on right now with him, and I certainly appreciate Mountain Area Land Trust's help on that. Got a couple of fire mitigation bills that we're working on right now that I think are coming over to the House, should be this week or next week. One of them, I'm talking to Brad about, dealing with the mitigation deduction and how that works right now in statute. See if we can kind of massage that a little bit, so it works a little better for more people in our community, because the way that it's currently structured, it really doesn't allow the, doesn't allow a lot of people to be able to take advantage of it. So trying to, trying to work on that. Another thing, Chief of Law Firm, he's still here, but I'll see him, he's got a job, oh, there he is right there. When we were talking that around maybe eight months ago or so, we had a really good discussion on how do we, at the state level, what steps can we take to try to help you? And, you know, one of the things that he said is, you know, the best way to fight a fire is to make sure a small fire doesn't turn into a big fire. It's good to have things like aircraft and all that sort of thing, but by that time, we're talking about a big fire. And one of the things that he mentioned to me that I really took to heart, and now we've turned that into legislation, is trying to get more anchors that are available, that are trained, because as everyone in here knows, you know, when wind shift and all that kind of thing, you know, everybody in the community may want to get involved and they want to help, but that can be a very dangerous situation as well. So we're working on a really good bill that is going to increase training and set up, I think, a pretty program, and particularly for veterans too, post-9/11 veterans to get involved with. So I think, I'm pretty excited about that. But we've got, you know, a three-week countdown, and once, once the time runs out on the clock in Colorado, the rules are that anything that hasn't been passed is, it's over, so it falls off the calendar. But I've had three bills signed by the governor, and I'm working very hard right now to represent everybody, Democrat, Republican, unaffiliated, independent, doesn't matter. I really feel like it's my job, you know, I feel like you sent me there to not just make noise, I'm really working hard to make a difference and make an impact for our community. So thank you very much for coming tonight, and I know many of you are here to talk to CDOT. They are going to be sticking around afterwards, and I'm sure, certainly happy to answer any questions afterwards as well. And truly thank you again for always being so kind to life. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, John. You know, we have so many things going on in our community, and everybody here that is in charge of something asks me to make an announcement. I'm going to make a few, but there are so much information everywhere around here, you need to stop at every table and talk to people and get all the information that's out there. First of all, the Night Health Fair is at Our Lady of the Pines Catholic Church on Saturday, April 25th, so you can take advantage of that. The Mountain Home and Garden Show is at Conifer High School, April 25th and 26th. Let's see, Elevation Celebration, you've heard a little bit about that tonight, and the 5K Run. Conifer Area Council is very, very involved in that 5K Run. It's on July 25th, and you can go to active.com to find out more information about that. Let's see here, we've got a lot of things going on with Trails right now, so we've got a Trails Team, our Trails Team is back here. You can talk to Punky, and Peter, and Kirk, and Pat, and John, and everybody else back there. I think Lauren is going to be here talking about Intermountain Human Society, but also the Main Street Loop Project, Firewood to Logging, Splintered Forest, Matt's Tree Service back at the table back there. Let's see, I believe that there was going to be information about Music at Meyer Ranch. I don't know if she came, she got?
She's here.
Is she here?
Right in front of me.
Okay, perfect, I didn't see you before. So we have information about Music at Meyer Ranch. Conifer Area Council is actually raising money with King Supers cards, and that goes for Trails, for, you know, all the, we're working on so many, so many projects. And so we need in-kind money for a lot of things we're working on. So if you would like to talk to Angela, she's the one that's had the time card up in the back, about that, that would be great. Let's see here, there are lots of nonprofits here tonight, so please go and talk to them. Lots of groups here, get information from them. All the speakers have information for you and are here to answer questions. CDOT, like I said, will be up here, so if you're interested in that, come on up here. Otherwise, everybody will be all the way around the outside. And I'd like to thank again, Firewood to Logging and Matt's Tree Service for their community support of tonight's meeting. And especially, I'd like to thank all of you for being here. Hope to see you at all the events this summer that are taking place. And we'll see you at our next Town Hall meeting, which is next September, September 16th. So thanks for coming, and please stick around and talk to everybody.